Welcome to the town of Cordera Madera Planning Commission for March fourteenth, two thousand twenty-three. Please call the roll.
I think I'm gonna do it here. Uh, I'll start with Commissioner Kenny. Commissioner.
Bush.
Busher, okay, thank you very much. Commissioner Chase.
Here.
Commissioner Rizzo.
Here.
Commissioner Ben now.
Here.
Thank you. Please join me in a salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Um, we always open the meeting to public comment for that which is not on the agenda tonight, uh, and that would mean that that would have to be somebody online Tracy.
Chair Chase, no emails have been received, um, to the public comment email and, um.
Okay.
No hands raised online.
So then we'll close that public comment session and we'll go directly to our consent calendar. The consent calendar is for something that we can vote on collectively on a motion by any commissioner and it shall, uh, be deemed to have received the action recommended by staff. Commissioner, remember the public may request the removal of an item from the consent calendar and then it will be considered last under new hearings. So. If someone wants to make a motion or, uh, pull it for review again.
We've got three options for motion, right, Chair Chase?
Yes.
Uh. And it might seem helps just in, just in case I get this correct, uh, I believe that number two, um, we're approving the appeal, uh, making them remove the windows as part of the. Modification we requested.
Yes, you're upholding the appeal, uh, and that way you're adopting the resolution of holding the appeal.
With no modifications to the resolution.
Of course, at the commission's discretion.
The modifications are in the resolution that we recommended, so we would adopt it without any modifications unless you want to make some changes. Cool. Okay, so make a motion. There's, there's three of you who can make the motion. Okay, second.
Second.
Okay, we can vote.
Sorry about that. Commissioner Kenny?
Hi.
Commissioner Busher. Commissioner, uh, Ben now?
Yeah.
Yes.
Vice Chair Rizzo.
Uh, hi.
And Chair Chase.
Hi. Okay, thank you. Uh. So then we go to our continued hearing. So this is a continued hearing for three thirteen Cordera Madera Town Center. This is a major design review application for modifications to the existing retail space, number three, one, three, within the Cordera Madera Town Center. This is otherwise known as the Our House application. Mr. Boyle, do you care to make a presentation at this point?
Yes, I do, Jim and Chase, thank you. Yeah, but I have a, a brief, a brief PowerPoint presentation summarizing the changes, um, that, um, the applicant has made from the last. Um, planning commission meeting, um, just to bring everybody up to speed, um, this item came before you at the last planning commission meeting of February twenty-eight. And at that point you, um, deliberate deliberated and had made discussions with the applicant and provided a list of changes that you wanted to see the applicant make. And, um, and continued that meeting until date certain, which is, um, today, March fourteenth. So there is no additional notice sent out. Um, and in my staff report, I've given that background as well as attachments to the, um, or links to the packet. And the video from February twenty-eighth and then the brief project description and then a more detailed description of all the modifications that the applicant has made. And, uh, there was public, one public comment that we received, um, between February twenty eighth and, and today, and that's in your packet as well. So briefly going over the modifications to the building. They are. Oh, there we go. So here we are. So project location obviously has not changed, um, so that the southeastern corner of town center, uh, currently occupied by Barnes and Noble. Modifications to the east elevation, um, most significant is the reduction of the, um, uh, what I, what I called the, um. I called them the flying rectangles, um, the applicant calls them the, what's the name? I just forgot. Pardon me? The portals, thank you, the portals, um, the, the height of the portals has been reduced, uh, except for the center one, uh, which is, or I'm sorry, not the, the one above the main entrance. Um, as requested by the commission, uh, the, all the portals were lowered except for the one above the door. And in addition, so, um, proposed is the higher image and the lower image on the slide is what was presented in February twenty-eighth. Another modification is, um, from bottom to top, uh, the core ten material, um, exterior material that was proposed has now been, um, just. Uh, applied where signs are present. So in the lower image, you see core ten on the far left, far right and center more or less. And on the upper image, you just see it on the far right and above the doors. So they simplified the exterior materials, basically reducing the use of the, the core ten material. Those are modifications to the east elevation and then modifications to the west or the mall interior, um, similar, the, um, portals have been reduced in height. Uh, the four portals, uh, to the left of the main entrance have been reduced in height as you see from, from lower slide to upper slide, the, um. Over the door, um, that height has remained the same and that material has been changed from both combination of the, um, the. Bo wood material to the core ten and just, just the core ten is being used. And then they've also simplified the exterior materials for the, um. The left, I'm sorry, the right portal to the door and then the portal above the four eyes, um, retail store. Again, um, simplifying and that the core ten is used behind the signs in this elevation as in the east elevation. No other changes to, to that elevation. And then these are just, um, other images from the south end, um, again showing, showing the changes, most notably the, obviously the, and the change in the height of the portals. And then the north end as well. Um, a couple of the modifications that the commission discussed and I discussed in the staff report is, um. You asked, um, the applicant to explore lead certification. The applicants responded that, um, they have chosen not to pursue a lead certification at this time. However, they'll go to the extent possible as, as far as they can go to make the building as energy efficient and green as possible. And of course they will be required to meet all Cal Green mandatory elements. Second item that you discussed was outdoor areas and the outdoor areas as discussed at the meeting will be open to the public during business hours. Both in outdoor area in the, in the east and the west elevate elevation. And then our house is also, um, will be working with mall ownership to perhaps install some of their outdoor furnishings in some of the seating areas. Throughout the common areas of the center. So that, um, concludes my presentation, uh, still same recommendation that the app, that the planning commission approved the attachment resolution. And, um, with the attached conditions of approval and I'm here to enter any questions if you have any.
Thank you, Phil. All right, we'll start with you and see if the commissioners have any questions for you before we go to the presentation from the applicant. So, uh, Margaret, do you have any questions for?
I have, uh, one question and I'll say at the outset, I did watch the video. From the planning commission meeting at the last hearing, everyone looks very good on TV. Um, so the, the picture, that's the picture. It did, what were the tenants of the big building? Contacted it, it just about the view that they might or might not be losing there.
The, I, I can see that the public notice goes everyone to everyone within three hundred feet. Um, and so they, uh, I believe each, yeah, so each tenant receives a notice of, of this public hearing.
And no one commented.
Is that correct? No, no one commented and whether unfortunately, Mark, um, Monty's not here. To discuss, I thought he may have mentioned that at the prior hearing, whether he had, you know, face-to-face conversations with, uh, tenants in that building, I do not know. Perhaps Mark, he did.
Okay, that's my question.
Okay, thank you, Margaret. Uh, Mr. Rizzo?
I don't have any questions.
All right. Valerie? Okay, Daniel?
No questions.
All right, nor do I. So you're on the spot, time for you to make your presentation.
Yeah, thanks. Thank you, Chair, members of the board, um, Mark Pultorick, RDL Architects principal, um, as, um, Phil described, we were in two weeks ago. Turned around all the changes in two weeks to get this back in, uh, thank you for allowing us to come back in two weeks. We're gonna just touch upon a few of the exterior elements that Phil had touched upon. Get to the colored elevations. Maybe. Um, as discussed, uh, left-hand side, we did remove the core ten steel, lowered all of the main, uh, portals down to the elevational heights as requested per that. Uh, second rendition that we did. All of the heights do fall under what the existing parapet heights were. Uh, we went to the Trespa as requested. And the core ten just at the signage, that was the main change to this elevation. And I do agree with staff that it did make a great difference to the actual design, it simplified and made it a lot cleaner. On the rear as well, we. Got rid of the split look where it was half core ten, half Trespa, put the core ten behind all the signage elements. The Trespa is now going along flanking the angled wall. We did lower the portal elements on that angled wall and the far left element. The center signage area or the main entry, we kept those heights the same to match the existing parapets that were there and we raised the. The center or low point of the main entry parapet to line up with the top of the, uh, portal. So we kept that deviation line going across. Which raised the core ten steel element, which I think helped the verticalness of that piece and we did, um, shorten the signage. We made it smaller, went from two feet down to eighteen inches. We felt that that was a, an amicable size for the area of that piece. We tried sixteen and it got a little too small. But proportionally, we feel this works at this location. And on the right-hand side, uh, above four eyes, we changed it out from the Aluka bond to, um, the Trespa. And to answer, um, the question regards to the views, um, based on the existing parapet heights and everything that were matching that was out there. It will not be affecting any of the views from the, the other tenants or the buildings. And the two windows that you do see on, um, the right-hand side, those are the existing tenant windows that are there. We will just be re-cladding the face, the building, and we do have approval from the law office to, uh, handle that piece of it. Um, to go through a few of the pieces, I, I know there was questions about lead certification. They did run it up the flagpole to the CEO and as well as being publicly traded. They've opted not to seek lead on this, but we have run through with our mechanical engineers, um, based on the title twenty-four, um, portion we have to go through, which is the. Governing, uh, energy code that we have to meet. We are, we are passing better than the, uh, the marginal standard piece of the code by over nine percent, better than what the energy code is requesting. With the, with the existing roof that's still on there redoing the exterior walls, which, uh, is somewhat of a feat, still dealing with the existing structure that's there in an existing building. Um, the green pieces, we have to meet Cal Green mandatory is based on, uh, as much as we can with the existing building because of the size of the building. So we are amending to the requirements of Cal Green based on what the building department has indicated, we need to fall under. Um, we do have daylight harvesting going into the building where all the skylight zones are, so. The entire right-hand side of the building where the skylights, we do have daylight harvesting in place. We've installed lighting control panels with dimmer systems to help during the day that we can dim the lights down to help control the energy pieces. Uh, the insulation has been wrapped up to our ten continuous on the exterior with a, um, an R twenty-four cavity within the walls. With a, uh, all the glazing is one inch, uh, insulated glazing with low E coatings on it. Which are markers for the glass with the low E coating are well under what the code is requiring for energy efficiency, along with thermally broken frames to help with the. Uh, heat loss or anything that will happen. Um, with that, I'll open the floor for questions.
Okay, simple change presentation. So, um, we'll start over here on my right with Mr. Kenny to ask you any questions that he has for you.
No questions at this time.
Okay. Valerie? There you go.
So the, uh, decision for the lead, I appreciate for coming back, uh, with the answer and I just want to understand was that, uh, what was the reasoning behind considering that you have, um, reached, uh. All of the requirements for title twenty-four, which would qualify under at least lead certified, uh, under retail certification, was there just a monetary decision? I just want to understand it.
It was a monetary decision by their board, I guess I can call it, it was above my pay grade, it's.
Okay, yeah, I understand that. Um, and then they have more of a technical question, uh, and practical one. So these portals, um, what is the cleanliness of those? Because now since the portal is much narrower, how it will be accessed to be cleaned, um, from environmental. Stuff, birds, for instance.
Uh, they'll, they'll be able to bring a, uh, either a Skylift or JLG in, uh, it's all Lucabond, so it can be easily washed off with just water.
How often are they planning to do that?
That we'll have to find out what their maintenance plan is to keep the building clean. They, they're, they're very adamant with keeping a clean structure, um, just because of the, the nature of their business and what they uphold.
Okay, yeah, I'm just concerned, you know, it's, it's a very frontal and, you know, there will be obviously some nesting.
Hmm, that's a good point, nesting birds. It's not in the planning code.
No.
Margaret, do you have any questions for?
I don't have questions, no.
Okay, all right, Mr. Rizzo.
I just have a question, um, when you were doing the survey, I vaguely remember, I, I believe that the, the existing lighting system in there is fluorescent lighting that, that is not dimmed, do you recall?
It, it is not dimmed, it's old antiquated fluorescent fixtures and it's all, it's all coming out of the building.
Yes, you, you, the system you're putting in is with your daylight harvesting and.
It's all, all LED lighting and.
A huge upgrade. Thank you. One last question, the roof, you said we're not replacing it, but you are replacing it, right? You're gonna re-insulate it and put, put new, a new roof on?
We are not, it's, uh, that's the malls piece and talking with Monty, the roof, the roof was. Done a little while ago, we're gonna patch and repair where we're basically making any attachments to it. Uh, but most of the, uh, areas that we're going through is we're keeping the existing man certs as they go up, just removing the clay tiles and we're gonna. Basically build over that and use that structure to create the frames going up.
Okay, thank you.
I have one more question out of the order, uh, in regards to the construction waste management plan, do you guys have anything, um, intact? Uh, because it has been mentioned, you know, removing all of the fluorescent.
It will all be part of the Cal Green piece that we have to follow, so the GC will have to file a waste management plan and how they're gonna handle it with the.
So are you, are you meeting just minimum requirement or are you doing a little bit more evaluated construction management plan?
They. Based on where we have it, we are at minimum, but with the, um, with the waste based on fluorescents, so that we will enforce them to. Basically take the precautions that need to be done if they are hazardous to the point. And the tenant has also agreed to recycle program also.
Okay, and, uh, one more question from the last meeting, uh, you know, we brought up the concern, the lack of the community spaces and, you know, there, there've been some discussion about having. Just furnishing and the, um, uh, some areas of the center, but are we, um, I, I know that the Our House Real Estate, uh, Director, she. Brought up the idea that some of the, uh, stores are going to have the retail component, the coffee shop component, uh, inside of the stores, was that discussed at some point?
This one currently right now, there will not be any, um, coffee shop within it. They will probably provide coffee or some sort of a, like Keurig machine or something that the, that they will serve to. Uh, as people as they're either going through the process of ordering their furniture, doing fabrics, but to go to a full coffee shop and that, that's not, that won't be part of their program yet. Due to the health department pieces and everything they have to go through.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay. Noticing that the, uh, metal panels all are sloped, that's important, so water will run off. I just worry about the durability of this. Selection up there on top of these, uh, arches and so forth. Um, it looks like the core ten panels are about two by two sizes, something like that that are going on the face.
They'll be, they'll be slightly large in that, um, they, they come in max size of four foot by ten foot, so we'll, we'll align the fours and as they go across. Uh, the goal is to get the linear effect with the lines as we get it to go across and the, they will be sloped at the top for the ACM and it is a heavy gauged ACM to be able to. To handle the slope and the size.
Yeah. This is unusual construction for Cordera Madera, so. Hopefully it, it will last. Sure, Monty will see to that, okay? All right, um. Uh, I don't have any other questions, so at this point, I think we'll click it, we'll open it up for public comment and, um, then we'll go into deliberation. Tell Miss Tracy, we're open for public comment. Do you have anybody that wants to make a public comment?
No, I do not.
Well, that sort of settles that issue, okay, so.
It's, it's Martha on there, I'm sure she doesn't have a comment.
Well. What can I say? All right, she can't comment, so anyway, all right, so then we'll close the public comment section of this, uh, and bring it back here up to the diocese to discuss this. And see if the commissioners have anything they'd like to say about this, or, uh, we would entertain a motion of approval. Mr. Kenny?
Well, I wanna thank you for making these changes, um, in, in such a short schedule, I really appreciate that. Um, I will say that I'm disappointed about the decision about lead, it seems to me for a company that promotes itself as, uh, sustainability is one of its core values. Uh, not everything covered, uh, in Cal Green is covered in lead and, uh, I think that would be, would be, would have been a good gesture for a community like Cordera Madera that really prides itself. In sustainability and, and trying to do the best we can, so, um, you could pass it on to your C, uh, CEO, uh, that we're disappointed in that. That's, that's, uh, that's what I have to say.
Okay. Thank you, Valerie.
Yes, same here, I, um, agree to that, a little bit disappointing considering the image that has been portrayed on the website and the corporate responsibility report as well of the company. Um, I'm also a little bit, uh, disappointed of the program use for the business, uh, due to the lack of community, uh, aspect. I feel like it's not really going into the interest of the community and not supporting the, all of the activities and it's not. Uh, all ages driven, it's geared towards the adults only. And, uh, people with children and teenagers will not, who are, you know, younger kids and teenagers will not be able to attend. Um, into the store and they will not be catered, catered, I feel like we're lacking the community spaces where community can get together. And Barnes and Noble was part of it and this replacement of this business use is not that and, you know, our conversations. From the last time having maybe like some sort of coffee shop aspect would, uh, bring that back, however, it has not been decided to continue with that, so it's a little bit disappointing. To, uh, have the town center proceeding with that.
Right, okay. Anything else?
No.
Oh, okay. Thank you. Um, Margaret?
I, I'm gonna reiterate that and I noticed it particularly last week when Valerie brought it up. Barnes and Nobles, uh, if you spend any amount of time there. Really was used, a well-used area for all age groups, especially children. Um. And it's, it's a loss, it's a huge loss to that town center not to have. Barnes and Nobles there anymore and I don't see that Our House has done anything to. Help that situation and I'm sure with all the creative minds going on in Our House. You could have and you should think of some ways to improve that, not you. Exactly, I'm just addressing you as you're here. Um, I think that, uh, it's really, um, it's not even a matter of cost, it's a matter of. Good spirit in the community you're coming into and the loss that our community is facing. Um, and not having that bookstore there, which was friendly to all families and all ages. Um, I, I do think the improvements, uh, to the facade and, and the sizes are great, but I think, um. I think Our House has to step up a little more and become a part of Cordera Madera.
One, uh, one thing that I can add and I.
Okay. Yeah, if you want to speak, uh, we'll, I'll ask you to come up after we've all spoken and then we'll do it that way. Thank you, I appreciate that, yeah. Um, Margaret?
I, I feel very strongly about that, can you tell?
Yeah. Appreciate that, okay. Mr. Rizzo?
Well, I'd just like to say I appreciate you making, uh. All the concessions that we had talked about over the last, uh, the last meeting with the change in the facade and. I think it really brings down the scale, uh, from, from the portals to the signage, uh. Trying to make a flat roof building look in scale is very difficult, even in the, in the, um, in the renderings, uh. I think it was said in the last meeting that, uh, the building behind it, just because it's set back, which is our crate and barrel is actually taller and it's actually more massive. So I think that the, uh, the attempt with the portals to kind of come up with a pattern or rhythm. And with us, uh, our recommendations bringing that down and, and bringing some cohesion with the materials and, and the signage, I think it did a lot. Uh, did a lot for the design and I appreciate that you taking the steps to listen to us. On that and I feel like I can make the findings to move forward with an approval.
Thank you, Jim. Um, Mark, I think that you've heard from the other commissioners, um. Uh, about this community aspect and the energy aspect of it. I don't know, um, what your pipeline is to management, but I assume it's significant. Um, and that, uh, communicating the loss of this community center to the company is important. Um, the other businesses in that center almost all have some kind of little gathering element to them some way. And that would add to the success of the store if they created. And that would add to the success of the store if they created something that allowed people to feel like they can bring their kids in and hang out and all that stuff. A furniture store, not so much just by itself, but if you can convince them that it's good for business, good for the sense of community. People want to go there and browse and look at stuff that brings people into the store. That would be an immense improvement if they understood that. I don't know if they do get that. It's such a large corporation. I don't know. That can be communicated effectively for this one location out of how many eighty-five stores, something like that. Yeah, right. So um yeah, I I wish it were so that they got that and said, gee, we can encourage this to happen and I see the furniture is stated it may be placed outside for that aspect of it. I hope that you guys and the store management and the center can see that that continues because the fountain's right out there that would recharge that area and parents and everybody would feel like hanging out. That would be a great aspect to it. Strongly hope that that message gets to the right people and it's good for store business to do that. In any case, I also can make the findings for this uh as you've modified it. And thank you again for doing this so quickly and coming back and allowing us to see it in person and get this rub on it. Uh, it's important to the town and the commission and thank you. So with that said, um, you wanted to speak a little bit and I would like to hear what you have to say. Yeah.
I I will pass it on to upper management with that piece. And I know that uh Nikki, who was here with the um real estate end, has been in talks with Monty on creating some areas within the main courtyard areas to enhance with their furniture to create some gathering zones. Um, and then speaking with some of the brokers that we work with, um, based on the rumor mill, it sounds like Barnes is coming back to the uh the town center, that they are finalizing a lease within that zone. So it doesn't sound like you guys are gonna fully lose them. It that's that's what I am hearing at this point. It'll just be a little smaller version, but.
Right, yeah, that's out there, right? And we lose a burger place, we get another one.
And thank you for allowing me to come back in a short period of time.
Yeah, well, that's great. I we wish you luck. Um, so with that said, uh, let's have a motion one way or the other here. Anybody's willing to do so. Valerie, you pressed your speak button.
I'm just waiting to go by example.
So the motion is uh on the page. Whatever it's not four or five pages in. Um, you would have to flip through it there. Would be uh there you go. So you can say in the matter of, you move to approve.
In a matter of I I'm moved to approve a resolution of the planning commission of town of Corder Madera upholding the whoops. Whoa. I thought I had it. Excuse me. Uh, in a matter of I move to approve the major design review application for the modifications to the existing retail space. Uh, three, one, three, within the Corder Madera Town Center filed P L two, two dash zero, zero, nine, seven.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, all right. So we take a roll call here.
Uh, Commissioner Bushweyer.
Hey.
Commissioner Kenny.
Yeah.
Commissioner Bando.
Hi.
Vice Chair Rizzo.
Hi.
And Chairman Chase.
Bye.
Okay.
The motion passes.
Are there appeal rights with this?
Yes, there are. Um, any action taken by the planning commission at a public hearing. Um, any decision by the commission may be appealed to the town council within ten calendar days. And appeal forms are available at the planning department and there's a three hundred dollar filing fee.
I would note that the um resolution should actually say the appeal period ends March twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-three. Thirty ten, ten days from today, correct? Phil?
Yes. Yes.
Okay. All right, so um that means you're probably gonna get a billing permit soon. Where are you going? So. Um, since it's a meeting and there's nobody watching, but um Martha, um, you know, I I implore you to keep the lighting uh under the regulations that are listed in the motion here. Yeah, so um I have comments to give to staff about some signs that have been violating our lights lately, so I hope that uh you will make sure that they don't violate the
I'm a rule chair.
Yeah, thank you. All right, good luck.
Thank you. Thank you.
Have a good evening.
All right. Okay. It is time for review of the Corder Madera Town Council Accepted Twenty Twenty Three Work Plan. This is gonna be Mr. Wolf who's gonna inform us.
Thank you, uh, commissioners. So yes, I thought it would be a good opportunity to uh relay to you the um work plan. Twenty twenty-two, tw- sorry, twenty twenty-three work plan and um sort of a prioritization of work program areas by the town council and which they accepted at the March seventh town council meeting. Um, and give you a little bit of look inside the town councils um sort of overall strategic planning for two thousand and twenty-three. Um. This is actually something that we've done the last three or four years. It hasn't been a regular sort of cadence to it and it seems to have adjusted um from time to time, just depending on when the council reorganizes and and whatnot, but I think we have it sort of nailed down now, uh, given the change to the elections um to November. Uh, I think going forward, we're what we're gonna try to do at the council will probably reorganize in December and then what what uh start uh hopefully adopt a work plan in January of the of the following year going forward and that sort of aligns nicely with how they reorganize and have a new mayor um sort of as they do the rotating thing to sort of um coincide with that as well. Um, that schedule. So what I thought I'd do is just uh give you a summary of the work plan. Um, we had two discussions um and two strategic planning workshops, we like to call them, with the town council. Um and I I would I'm giving you essentially the staff report that uh the town council um received as part of the March seventh a town council meeting. Um, so you can see essentially their overall work program areas were category uh categorized into three different areas. Um, category one. Ultimately, um, trying to all these areas are important to the town council, but it's trying to really identify the relative importance of each of these work program areas. Um, in category one, there was fiscal sustainability. Maintaining town finances, obviously, and and dealing with some of the long-term strategic uh financial planning that needs to needs to occur. Um, climate a- action adaptation and preparedness. Um, that's kind of self-explanatory. Um, those were top priorities for the council. Town operations really making sure that we're um focused on staff recruitment, retention and development. And reorganizing um the planning and building department, which should all be aware is that had been renamed actually the Community Development Department as of the March seventh meeting as well. So um uh really, it's in name only at this point, but um uh that does mean that when we go out and recruit for my replacement, it will be the Community Development Director uh moving forward, which is just in line with how um that position is classified and responsibilities of which are sort of a little bit wider than planning and building. And I think a better name and better fit for really the work that that individual will be um managing. Also, category one, just reading through divi- diversity, equity, inclusion. We've we've done a lot on that in the last year, just in sort of changing the town's mission statement and starting some uh training programs for all staff. I think as well this year, we're gonna try to offer that training to all the council members and commission and committees uh members within the town as well. So uh be aware of that. Um, one of the things that we added this uh the council added this year was just to highlight community responsiveness as a category one sort of work program area. This was something that I uh um informed them of a sort of in terms of the amount of time and energy and effort that staff really devotes to this particular work program area should be elevated and should be recognized um uh as as sort of a top priority. Public safety, obviously. Uh, then there's the next level down, uh, infrastructure maintenance and improvements. Community events and events and involvement, really just uh the idea of promoting uh community connectedness, much, much the way that you were just discussing, um, sort of the way that um programming could be included in potentially new development to um and provide that level of uh actually physical connectedness amongst our residents and community members. Um but it extends obviously to uh activities at the park and programming that Parks and Rec does as well and and so how to use those resources uh to promote that uh customer service. Um there's, there's many uh actions that staff is working on uh related to, and again, improving way we do things and and process. Um, for example, process permitting. Um, we have all our departments really have different ways of doing that. We're trying to streamline that um as well as we just actually launched um Open Gov, which is a uh online financial tool really for our community residents to get a look inside of the budgets of each of our departments and uh how that's um informs overall priorities at the town. So you can actually um a a couple, I think there was a presentation at I want to say the second meeting in January of the town council where that was a a presentation was given and um we've put out some information on our Friday newsletters and news flashes to the community. So if you haven't been on there, might be of interest. Just check that out. Um land use planning, economic development, don't have to explain that one. Um, town facilities and amenities, this is more related to actually new projects and and improving our uh town facilities such as town hall. And so you can see all all of this is really important, but again, just trying to find the relative relative importance here. And then quality of life issues, which we often hear about and see at the commission level, but certainly at the planning department level or community, community development department level. Um, and so that's the overall um prioritization of work program areas. And then there's an actual staff work plan that goes along with that where we um identified and the council identified with staff's obviously help of identifying the ongoing work that was occurring in twenty twenty-two that has been rolled over into twenty twenty-three, some of that. Um, and then a new action or or work program, sorry, work plan items as well um from each of the different departments in town. And so each of those were then sort of brought into the structure that I just went through um in terms of category one, two and three, and under those different work program area titles. So a couple um that's in your attachment. I'll just go over the ones that may be relevant to this commission and fiscal sustainability. Um, we've had this on there actually the last few years, um, certainly during the pandemic that was put on hold. It's just wrong timing, but we do need to update our planning, building and public works uh fee a structure and fee schedule. Um, and so that's something that I hope we really, we we're, we intend to get to this year. Um, moving on to climate hazards, uh, um part of the um what I intend to do is actually have our staff that's working on the reach codes um for residential remodels and there's some E V pieces to that as well. Um, I certainly want to have that discussion, not only be at Climate Action Committee, but also at the Planning Commission as well. I think it's important that the town council ultimately receives some comments and feedback from the Planning Commission on that uh project. So you'll.
You should go through this. Could you identify things that our staff versus things that are coming to the commission?
Sure, I mean, sounds good. So this is one, I'm sorry, I'm on page two of this document that the commission will be reviewing. Um, it's not gonna be sort of a vote. I think we're really coming to the commission for more of a comments um and potential um uh that we would bring forward then to the Climate Action Committee and then to the town council. Um, next one down, which is um, and as you'll see on the left-hand column of this table, P and B refers to planning and building. So this was before we actually made the name change. But um certainly under this category, I we called out a piece of the design review um ordinance update which relates to streamlining the approval of applications for raising homes out of the floodplain. Um, so that certainly is something that will come before the commission as part of that overall ordinance uh that you've already had a couple workshops on. Um, Tracy and Phil have obviously leading that effort. Um, two down from that, we have the townwide E V strategy to increase uh E V charging capabilities on public property and public places. I I wanted to um highlight this one for you because I know it's come up on a couple occasions with the Planning Commission, but I don't, this one is really intended to be developed with the Climate Action Committee and staff. Um, so uh certainly can come as an informational item, but um next page, page three. Uh, under town operations, the fourth one down, I had mentioned this already, but certainly a priority of the town council. Uh, anything in bold is sort of highlighting that as a really priority project. Um, that's just, we have a community development uh director position and a building official position that needs to be uh filled. And so that's um obviously top priority for me right now. Will not be coming to the commission. That's just a staff town organization, um, staff uh management item. At the bottom, uh, I mentioned this as well. Uh, wait, sorry, no, that will, well, I did already mention this, that uh the uh diversity, equity, inclusion training will be applicable to all the uh town council boards, commissions and committees. Page four, um, I didn't highlight any of those. Um, not really directly relevant unless I miss something. No. Um, nothing on page five. I think the next one I highlighted actually is page six under land use. So that's um so uh certainly complete the housing element update. Uh, you will be seeing this again in uh, we think, we're thinking late April. So our sixty-day review. We um, we sent the housing element back to H C D for the second round of review. That was done on February twelfth, I want to say. So we should be getting that back in mid-April and we're hoping that either it's approved and we can bring that directly to the uh Planning Commission um on uh uh April twenty-fifth, I think it would be for its recommendation to the town council. Um, but we'll just have to wait and see exactly if how many comments there are there. Um, page seven, the top of page seven, obviously, many of these are actually all of these. Um, page seven, the top of page seven, obviously, many of these are actually, all of these are sort of related to the commission's work. Um, the design review um zoning ordinance amendment. Um, that will be coming to the commission, obviously, for its recommendation to the Town Council. Um ordinance on short-term rentals, so this was something that was actually discussed. At the February twenty first uh strategic planning workshop with the Town Council. Um, we will be bringing this back, essentially giving them the same presentation that the commission received. Uh from Bob Brown, we're going to be bringing this to the Town Council, I think on April eighteenth, so they can provide direction on whether or not to pro- prohibit. Um. Or create an ordinance to prohibit the short-term rentals or to move forward and regulate them in some way. That was at the request of the Town Council in the workshop. And I think um they, they need some additional information or more information to make that uh provide that direction. But if we, uh either way, we would be coming back to the commission for with an ordinance, a draft ordinance for review and recommendation for to the Town Council. Um, there will be another round and need to update our ADU ordinance to comply with new state laws. As state law changes seemingly every year on this, that. What's, that's what happens when you try to sort of get into the weeds of. Ordinances at the state level, it's just has a trickle-down effect and we need to now. Weak ours to make it comply with state law. Um. There um, uh one thing that uh staff intends to do um is to actually establish some. Enhance public noticing standards, um really looking at for at a certain threshold. Require applicants to put up um signs more widely. Sort of recognizable signage for upcoming public hearings and projects. Um, that would be displayed at at the particular site, and it's just so people could um. Um, recognize that signage and and know that a public meeting is coming up. So that's a staff. That's a staff-driven project. Um, and then not only. Adopting the housing element, but starting to implement. At a staff level, starting to implement um some of the implementation programs that are in the house and element, and so you can. A lot of that is more, um this first year is just going to be information and putting more information out um to our residents and to our. Um multi-family home, uh multi-family um apartment and. Um. Managers and owners. Um. So we'll be doing that. And lastly, um uh this is really driven by the Town Council, um. Again, a staff-driven project here, but may end up um. Sort of having a discussion, I can't say at this point, the arrows mean that we'll likely continue on into the next calendar year, but. Um. The idea of exploring opportunities and options for um. Actually developing staff housing, and so the town actually thinking about ways in which we could, and this ties into staff. Uh retention and um. Uh staff um. Uh recruitment as well, but thinking about is there, is there, what are the options out there for actually doing something like that? And so really just initiating a process to start to explore that option. Um. So uh again, that's, that's just a really a staff level project, um under economic development. Um, you'll see that we will be. Developing, um there's sort of two processes, actually, next Tuesday, we'll be talking about sort of more of a. Tweaks to our temporary parklet regulations through the end of this year, but toward the end of this year, we'll be developing a uh an ordinance. It actually won't be in the zoning ordinance because it's going to be in the right of way, so we're, it's going to be developed under, I think it's Title twelve, streets and sidewalks. Um, still not exactly sure the process there, I'm not sure if the how or how in-depth or involved the commission might be in that process. Um, but we'll um come back and and. Uh let you know if if that will be um sort of driven through the Planning Commission or in another way. Um. And those are the ones I wanted to highlight, but you're welcome to ask any questions about some of these, um. But again, just wanted to give you that overview of the direction that the Town Council and the. Has uh given staff, uh I think there's certainly a recognition of things change um during the course of the year and. Um, but at the same time, if they do, and there's new things that come up, I think what we wanted to convey is is. Other, one of the things on the list that exists now maybe need to be bumped off or put on hold or what have you, and so at least. We have now sort of a overall um. List of. Um, projects that I should mention that are sort of. Beyond the day-to-day work that staff already does and to just to maintain the existing sort of what you see all the time, the designer view applications. Building permit applications, this is sort of beyond um that work program. Um really intended to advance the work of the town and make improvements um. Uh and advance sort of the overall um. Yeah, I would just say overall mission of of the town going forward, so with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
All right, that's Adam, um if I've got questions, I know these folks have questions, so um but uh is there anybody there uh that has a hand raised or anything?
There's not.
Okay, then we'll proceed with questions. Margaret, do you have any questions for Adam?
Um. I'm curious about that everything category, everything else category. Because. No one asked me what my everything else was, and I have a couple of them. So is there any room for um? Our input into this, or are we just observers of this?
Yeah, it's just observing, really, I mean, it's information, um. I shouldn't say it's just, uh you know, so the this is done at the beginning of the year because it's, before you know it, we're going to be in twenty twenty four and doing this all over again, so. Um. You 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 know, it happens pretty quickly, so. Um, but yeah, certainly the the council worked on this, um. And already accepted this work plan for twenty twenty three, so as far as this one goes, it's been accepted by the council. Um, as we know, though, again, things can come up from time to time and. Um, and at some point, we may think about a process where the commission can elevate items that thinks is important.
And and what um was there any process of public? Input into this?
Uh, so there was a a couple of, oh yeah, all the workshops were public, open, open to the public. And noticed, um and uh there was the last meeting, it was a public meeting as well. Um, and on the Town Council agenda.
James was going to go to that public meeting. I'm just kidding, he was.
What do I need to do?
No.
Was James or someone else's James?
Well, I, you know, to to me, this is, I, I appreciate the presentation, I appreciate. The fact that you pulled us into the loop. But I don't see any uh. Any reason to comment on this or ask questions because we have, it's, it's a done deal.
Yep, it's just, it's for information purposes, but I would note, I mean, certainly several of these items have been things that the have been worked on uh over the last year, especially um, you know, and in planning especially. Things don't happen in one year, they, especially when talking about ordinance development and policy work, it. Over multiple years, so whether that's the housing element. Short-term rentals, um. The uh design review update, so all those things you're aware of and they're on here and they're embedded in here, so. Um.
There you have it, right?
Okay.
All right, Mr. Rizzo.
I guess the only, I mean, a question, question would just be um. A lot of great policies coming about, um, how uh how is the implementation of uh some of the? And we have a new code enforcement person starting this year, have you, have you seen any matrix, any, any fall or rise in? Violations or anything like that? Or like, we got the dog leash thing here, we've got uh short-term rentals, there's, there's a bunch of things that are sort of, we're. We're making progress on some really good ordinances and then how are we implementing any of them?
Yeah, I mean, so that's the data, I think there's certain things that, yeah, I mean.
I know I just.
Quality of life issues, yeah, I mean.
Hornet's nest, but I'm.
I mean, I would call a lot of the code enforcement work, sort of the day-to-day, those are things that we're doing um consistently, we're responding to complaints and. Some may rise to into violations, um I'm not noticing any. Um, it'd be great to get, we, you know, get the perspective directly from our code enforcement officer at some point, but. Um. But I've not seen any sort of real change in. Overall. Um violations or so, anything like rising up to be a more. Um.
I hope it's lower.
Issue, I mean, you know. Yeah, well, so it's, it 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 does, I mean, that's ultimately the goal is that you, you know, with the. Violations, you sort of can now, the, the big one that we always see is this work without permits, and so we constantly are trying to. Respond to those, and the idea would be over time that. You bring them into the process and we have to bring them in a, into the process in a way in which. People want to know that they can work with our building department and get permits relatively uh streamlined manner. Um, uh but I think that's, that's not unique to Quaterman D, I mean, that's throughout. Mar- it's for Marin, I I can't speak to other areas, um but. Certainly working without permits is just a constant thing that we see.
Mm-hmm.
So there, there, that's uh being done, um, see that a lot, but. Yeah, uh uh there's not, the dog leash one is sort of quieted down right now, but it's winter time, I'm sure. Summertime comes out and gets, you know, it's summer seasonal, there's some, a lot of park activities, um, you know, which isn't, it's more of a park and. Rec commission discussion, but but they, there's a lot of issues at times, especially in the summer months, um. Over uh enforcement there that we're trying to work on. Um, but building related, it's, yeah, it's the work without permits, um. Uh, there's, you know, our code enforcement actually does some, some parking enforcement.
Mm-hmm.
Which um is similar to the community service officers that CNPA has, um. So, uh, yeah, a lot of graffiti recently that actually was uh, our code enforcement actually helped um. With CNPA making arrests there, so that was a success story, um that was actually a big problem on a lot of our. Bandend or or older, you know, the theater was getting tagged up and a lot of public infrastructure was getting tagged um frequently recently, so. Things like that.
And uh, is it a question about the post office, I, I know um. We were hoping that they might not renew their lease, it sounds like they re-upped it.
Yeah, no, I, I mean, that's, uh, we don't know of the specifics on that necessarily, but it's, my understanding is short-term.
Still short-term.
It's short-term lease, so. Still working on that issue and that's, that was, you'll see it's bolded here, so we're going to see if we can't make any more progress, it's been sort of in. A very. Challenging issue to try to resolve in a way um that. Um is sort of winner, win-win for everybody, um but um, yeah, sort of working towards, continue to work towards that this year.
A great housing site.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Jim. Uh, Daniel. Do you have any questions for Adam?
Yeah, uh, I guess, um. Um, is there a way that we can, uh commission can have some input? Um, before things are brought before us as drafts, um and particularly in the one that. Um, I'm looking at here, amending the zoning ordinance regulations related to design review.
Yeah.
Uh, could be lighting, uh could be signage, uh I. Personally have some questions about those standards we've set. And rather than have you all go off and do something and then we have to kind of debate it here, is there a way we can get some early input to staff? Before you take that step.
I think that's what we tried to do on that particular one with a couple of workshops, and we don't have anything developed. Other than just to sort of start talking about what staff is thinking about and getting the input from the commission, so um. That's been the process that I think has been pretty useful in the past uh for the commission to actually. Have these open-ended discussions and workshops um with the commission on those things, so um. Uh, yeah, I mean, it'd be certainly an opportunity to have more discussion on what if that's working, but um it's. Definitely seemed to have worked in the past as a, as a way to get, develop a good. Um, ordinance at the end of the day, addressing the things that the commission wants to get.
Yeah, I think that hasn't happened since I've been on the, on the board.
Oh, I see, okay.
Um, so I wasn't aware of that.
I think the last workshop you were participated in on design review, right, is that my?
I think so, yeah, we, we, it has been a while since we last brought the design review revisions to to the commi- commission.
We've had two, I think.
But that was not an open discussion about the, those provisions were very clerical cleanup things, they weren't big discussions about how well it's working for us and what we might also want to do.
Yeah, we can certainly, yeah, and you do mention signs, and I don't think we, we didn't bring up signs, and that's certainly an, an item we can, we can discuss. If, if the commission wishes to to modify the way in which we regulated signs at this point.
Well, and and I would say, I'll, you're, you're right in the sense that, you know, we start with the first one and you sort of build on it to try to sort of narrow things down, so if you weren't at the first one, I don't know if that would have been probably a great opportunity there, but. I think there is a discussion about designer view um in the slides or the last presentation that was made about changing those. What requires designer view and what doesn't, um. Inside, you know, there's a finding related to this sign there, signs there, so um. But, but yeah, I think this brings up a um potentially an opportunity to. Open up a discussion about other things that the commission may want to focus on going forward in terms of. Um, actual policy um changes or recommendations or modifications, so that. That certainly is something and and maybe there's a way to work that into the regular cycle of. Uh I'm just thinking now that we're sort of getting a little bit more structured to our. Um, our um. Anyways, this, we have the staff work plan and the council schedule, that maybe there's a way to work in some of the things that um could be considered as part of that. A work plan, um and work backwards from that and think of a good time for the commission to start to consider. Things that need to be addressed, for example, along with staff at a, at a, and edit, put it on an agenda on a regular, every, every year, for example, on a certain time. So I'm just sort of spitballing a little bit, but anyways, I hear what you're saying, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
But Daniel had been concerned about lighting and uh uh signs, so.
Okay.
Those are two things that are important, um I'd asked Martha to reach out to him about the process for bringing that onto our agenda.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and um, I don't know if she had reached out to you yet, no, she hadn't, so um. Formal process, I think uh with two new commissioners here, it might be good to revisit how things are put on the agenda.
Yep.
And that um those are things that um should um.
We can do that later on the agenda tonight, actually, when we get to that, it's part of the agenda to talk about.
Great. Um, Valerie.
Um, I have a couple of questions on the um development of the climate action work plan. Is there any works on the short term where some of the desirable points of the climate action plan? Would become the planning order ordinances for the town? Um, you know, I, I know you're mentioning about the reacting to kind of short-term goals, like elevating. Um, the homes from the floodplain, but for instance, requiring the new developments to have lead certification or any other third-party certification, right? Um, that would be great, and addressing the gray water gathering right now, which is not allowed, right, in a way. Um, so all of the things that could help mitigate the storm water runoffs and uh other things as well. Uh, just, you know, something that could help the new developments to get on the right stream, similar to what Palo Alto, for instance, is doing right now.
Uh, good, I can speak to that a little bit because I I was involved in the creation of the first climate action plan and the updating of the climate action plan. And I'm um blanking on when we'll update it again. Um, but um when we updated again, um it the planning commission will um will be involved. And um and basically, the climate action plan is a list of of goals and objectives that the town would like to achieve. And um at least the the existing climate action plan. And um if there are specific measures or things that the community wants to bring forward, there there's a process in which that's done. Um, I'm sure the our our climate adaptation coordinator would would hear that input from either the commission or the citizens or both and then and then move forward with an action such as um directing directing staff to develop a process for new development to require lead certification as an example. Um, so that's, you know.
Yeah, I think there's a mechanism for which, you know, that would take place. There's definitely some, I mean, the climate action committee, for example, at its next meeting, which is tomorrow at four thirty, they will be discussing the climate action work plan, which is, you know, we have one staff person really working on this. So there's there's in all of this, we have to really be considering staff capacity to sort of usher these initiatives forward in a thoughtful way. Um, but nonetheless, they're going to be discussing sort of the work plan of the climate action committee, both from the committee side of the ta- of the D I S and also from the staff side. And they've are, you know, um, some of that's already in here, obviously, as you can see. Um. The um, but certainly uh their their mission is to follow that or or to update as necessary. They're tied very closely to the climate a- action plan and the policies and goals that are in that plan. And if whether or not they need to be updated, they can um start to update those and actually um start to um prioritize those initiatives. Um, so I do see a lot of the those specific um uh, you you know, initiatives coming out of that committee, however, as it specifically relates to um the built environment, I think there are opportunities. One, there's a lot of ordinances and requirements um already out there um that probably should be uh I don't know, um, we could bring to the table and have some discussion about what's exists with respect to gray water and MMWD's requirements and whatnot, for example. Um, you know, the climate action folks I know are focused really on energy. Um, and so that's why you'll see the reach codes are really energy focused on electrifying buildings and um so on. Um. But beyond that, uh, there's stormwater prevention. Um, I'm not, I'm gonna get it wrong, but the I forget what the uh the mixed up requirements for um that we we follow county ordinances with respect to that. So there's a lot out there. Um, and again, I guess if there are specific things that this commission wanted to actually highlight and actually move forward in in terms of initiatives. Um, that could be something that is discussed as part of this sort of, I guess, yearly cycle of of sort of elevating certain priorities for staff to consider, or even I guess in this case for perhaps the climate action committee to consider in their work as well.
Um, be great.
Okay.
Nice to participate in that and um prioritize together.
Yeah.
What else is on your mind there, Valerie?
That's it.
Okay, all right. Um. Adam, uh, the uh the E V stuff that's coming before the town, is that all gonna be ad-based sort of E V ad or uh? No.
Yeah, well, so there's a couple of different E V things. One is part of the reach code to build the the reach codes that would modify our building uh code and go above. Um, I think essentially looking at like the tier one um Cal Green requirements for E V charging requirements for um new V E V charging infrastructure. Um, that would apply um both to remodels and I mean, the ordinance that we're talking about is remodels as well um as ad-based. The commercial ones, I think, are related to actually changing parking lots. And so there are some sort of, if you're modifying parking lots to a certain extent, I'm not exactly sure the threshold you would be then triggered to put in new E V infrastructure, whether that's just conduit, actual port uh new charging stations. I I I'm not sure, but so some of it is um, I mean, what we've adopted already is ad-based in terms of I mean, anything new is going to require new E V infrastructure. Um, but the code, uh, the ordinance that would be be coming before you in the summer for recommendation, um uh, actually for uh your comments um would be um not that based would be more sort of like as your modifications to existing buildings and then you're triggering other requirements um for E Vs. So is that is that?
Um, they don't actually need a building permit right now, right, to add a E V charger out in the parking lot, or do they?
You do need a building permit, um but it's it's basically a very streamlined process.
And so with that said, do they need a sign permit to have an ad on that E V charging station?
So our code, we've gone into this, our code as basically says you do if it's an actual sign, you know, and we specify what that is. But I think there's potential, I think we had somebody who was challenging that interpretation of our ability to do that under state law. So we may very well be in a position where you get sort of these I don't know, I mean, screens so far to this point, our code has held up, you know, and said basically like you're allowed to do X size and limit it to whatever your brand of the charger is.
Yeah.
Station, station identification.
As an example, the Rivian charging stations that will be installed in in near future, I I sent you all the images and and the notification that that does not come to you and there is no discretionary permit for the Rivian. As an example, for the Rivian state charging stations that will be um just south of um in the in the southern end of the town center parking lot. Um, but if they were, they were proposing similar to what Volta was proposing several, around a year ago, where it's an advertising, it's basically a billboard, it's advertising other things beyond the vehicle that we still have control of at this point, though its size may be a factor.
Great, okay.
And just also the um the county is adopting or has um is close to will soon be presenting, they haven't already, to the council, an electric vehicle readiness plan. And they will be looking for, and that's through our climate adaptation um coordinator, um Phoebe. Um, and so that's another document that's kind of in the works. Um, it's, I would call it maybe it's it's a, it's similar to the climate action plan, but it's just specific of here are some steps jurisdictions can take to um make their their community more electric vehicle ready. And so we'll have that, you'll have, the council will have a top opportunity to look at that and to tweak it and create, make it quarter man there zone.
All right, great, thank you. That's a lot of words around that. Um, I don't see the Menke Park development on here. Is that gonna happen or not?
So it's sort of embedded in the town park master plan process.
Okay.
So that will the council decide it will bring up the list of the priorities of which, you know, and let them sort of prioritize that as they wish. So there will be budget implications for that as well.
Yeah, okay, we need to channel Bob Bundy. Um. And uh, I'm really glad to hear that noticing signs are a part of the plan that I think is gonna help people be aware of what's going on around town when the projects come up. So, um, and all for getting the parklets resolved. So with that said, um, nothing else for you, Adam, eh? From this commission?
Yeah, that's all good too. It's just really an informational.
Yeah.
For you.
Thank you for letting us grill you a little bit.
Yeah, that's all good.
Um. Okay, so we're on to reports, announcements and requests. So commissioners, Margaret, do you have anything from the uh? You attended?
I attended one, but I also uh in listening to last week or last meeting, the one that I missed notice that Tracy gave report.
Uh huh, yes, she did. Okay, she did a great job on that.
Yes, she did.
Right.
Relieved to be in that.
Okay, great. Anybody else have anything else to report on? No. Okay, so um planning staff, nothing else for you to tell us? A lot of shaking heads over there.
Okay, did did you want to go over the process of bringing something uh?
Yeah, let's do that under future agenda items. Yeah.
Okay, so um am I seeing that we have nothing for um twenty eighth at this moment?
That's correct. This may have nothing on the agenda at this moment.
Okay, all right. So with that said, um to bring uh things to the uh agenda is a speci- specific process and let's hear it.
It should be in your packets under the uh planning commission rules and procedures.
Yeah.
Section four point two point two. Placing an item on the agenda, and I know it sounds sort of laborious here, but it's um intended to ensure that um essentially the commission really gets to hear and agrees that some something should be put on the agenda after hearing from staffs uh as well in terms of their ability to provide their necessary information and when that might be and to have the the discussion and the and the sort of thoughtful conversation that I think um some of this would require or typically would be required. And so you can see um anybody can place an uh uh request to add an item to the agenda. Um, uh, obviously, uh, it would be planning commission um where you'd submit a request in writing to staff and then we could um put that on this section of the um item seven of an upcoming agenda. And we'd actually attach whatever request came from a commissioner, for example, could be a member of the public. Um, that we'd attach that and any sort of staff commentary as well would be attached to the staff report, essentially a staff report. Commission could hear that and then agree, yes, this is worthy of putting on a future agenda at the time and date, hopefully that we can all agree on or that is agreed to. And then it would um then be placed on the a future agenda. So it it's sort of a two-step process, I think, just to be clear about that. And um I guess, is there? I don't know if there's actually public comment on that when you do a future agenda. It's not really public.
Normally, no.
Okay, okay. So that's essentially the way it would work and.
Okay, so if Dan wanted to request a item of lighting and uh or yeah, lighting or signage, you would write that out.
Yeah, and I think the reasons why and and sort of define the scope of what you hope to discuss at the meeting, that would be helpful for all the commissioners, I think. And so and also helpful for staff to be able to notice it properly because anything on the just commission's agenda should be um titled appropriately, so public knows what is going to be discussed. And um and then it, you know, gives us some time to um actually review that and then add any staff commentary to it as well. We could think about at that point, like what it would take for staff to be able to um provide whatever additional information may be necessary to discuss that.
And staff response might be informative to Dan or anybody else about, you know, what they're asking for.
Or existing, you know, sometimes it's like, well, here's the existing rules. Here's maybe typically if we're we maybe it's worthwhile to bring up what other cities do, et cetera, you know, and can bring that to the table to, again, help inform the conversation.
Okay. All right, is that satisfy everybody's questions about posting on the agenda? All right. Great. So then we have as a final piece of business, the approval of the meeting minutes for February twenty eighth. We have a motion to approve those meeting notes or an adjustment to the notes. Yes, Adam.
I would just note, I was not in attendance at that meeting, so just. I'm listed as attending.
Well, there's those. So cross that name off of the, and there has to be an adjustment to the note, so the notes would be uh approved as uh noted. Unless somebody else has another adjustment to the notes. We have a motion, anybody?
Motion approved.
Okay, second.
Second.
Okay, let's do a voice vote. Everybody, ready? One, two, three. Hi.
Hi.
Great. Thank you very much. All right, with all of that said and done, we're gonna adjourn this meeting. Thank you.